Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, October 25th, 2022. Again, this is a hybrid meeting, so members of the public are welcome to participate in person or remotely. In person, we are in the community room of the Norton Public Library at 68 East Main Street. If you would like to join via video using the Zoom app, you can use the link posted in the meeting agenda, as well as through the Zoom app specifically on your phone or other device, meeting ID 638-929-1060. There is also a dialing number if you prefer to use your phone home. The meeting will also be available on capable access channel 15, and will be available on demand via the Norton Media Center's YouTube channel thereafter. As these type of meetings continue, please feel free to email questions for the board ahead of the meeting to Brian Carmichael, seated to my right. And those emails can be read into the record during the meeting to assist those who may not be able to attend in person or virtually. So, in summary, pursuant to Act Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting is being conducted in person and is a courtesy via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Please note that one option for remote attendance and our participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public and board members. The meeting or hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technology prompts interruption of virtual broadcast unless required by law. So, with that, I'm gonna call the meeting to order here. In terms of planning board business and policies, I do want to let everybody know that the town did receive an appeal for our recent decision regarding Hill Street. I'm not sure if anybody else was informed or has been informed yet. Town Council has submitted a notice of appearance, but this will essentially be, would be defended by the applicant rather than town at this stage. I'm not sure if other members of the board have been involved with appeals with other town boards, et cetera. It is possible you will receive documents that list you as a quote-unquote defendant in your role as a member of the board. Again, you can read it if you want. The Town Council is managing all of that. But depending on what the process the appealing party follows, you may receive, may receive a copy of the appeal. It may be by certified mail, so you get one of those little things in your mailbox that they couldn't find you and they had to drop it off, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. At the, at the extreme end of it, I know at one point Amy said that they knew one developer who actually had people go around and serve people on town boards just as, just to be, just for overkill. But that has never happened to me, but just in case you get it, receive those, the appeal notice, it is all being handled and you do not need to do anything. Okay. In terms of bills and warrants, we do have one bill going around, which I'll pass around here, which is the monthly phone bill for Verizon. And I restate my regular lament that there's no other way to do this other than file the paperwork monthly, but hold on. We don't have any minutes to approve at this time, so we'll move into the meat of our agenda. The first item up is a continuation of an A&R endorsement, 16192, for 394 Old Colony Road. I know we have one of the engineers here, so I'll have them just come forward and state any updates. I think we do have some additional questions coming on that, but go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Tyler LaFreniere. I'm here with Risto Engineering, representing Ron Haskell at 394 Old Colony Road. Basically, our main question about this A&R is we would like to eliminate decal drive. We've determined that it's privately owned, the title search has been done. Ron Haskell does have ownership over that, and we are just looking for an answer as to how to go about eliminating that street.
So you're looking for guidance from the board rather than?
Yes, in order to, before we can, I guess, go forward with A&R, we, we have been told that we should basically work on eliminating decal drive prior to that.
Okay. I don't know if the board is in a position to provide legal advice in this situation.
Would that be something we'd go through an attorney then for?
I believe that would be, I believe that would be my, that has been the recommendation for what the Town Council has provided. Brian, is that been summarized in the conversations, I thought?
Yes, I would, if you wanted to. Town Council had asked to rescind. Rescind the submission?
Oh, rescinding the submission, okay. Okay, so if you're looking to unsubmit the filing, then you would move, then you would ask us, you would ask to withdraw. And let me just confirm the, so do you, I always want to triple check. That you would want to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, so one question before that. In the email that Brian sent me from Town Council, they had said we should also file to rescind the subdivision under G.L.C. 4181W, is that?
It's Mass General law.
Okay, so that would be through an attorney, that would not be through the planning board, basically?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Okay. So at this point, you are working, looking to withdraw the A&R application without prejudice?
Correct.
Okay. So as a board, we have the ability to grant that or not? And if we do choose to grant the withdrawal without prejudice, that would need to be a motion?
Motion to grant the withdrawal without prejudice, A&R 16192.
Seconded.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the matter? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of the withdrawal, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. The A&R is withdrawn. If you, once you get that sorted, please come back and talk to you again.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So that concludes the discussion for, excuse me, 394 Old Colony Road. So if anybody joining us from the Zoom meeting was here for, to discuss that matter, we are now moving on. Next item on our agenda is a continuation of a public hearing for Special Department 12737 for 280 South Washington Street. This has been continued a number of times, the applicant is seeking an additional continuance. We've never actually spoken to the applicant about this application since it's been on the agenda sporadically since March, so this might be approaching a record here. But Brian has pulled up an email here from the applicant's attorney, so it is still.
No, it's the engineer. This is the contact, Dan.
For some reason, I thought he was the attorney, but apparently not. In any case, it's either the engineer, it's in the same email signature. So this is still going through discussions with Town Council. Does anybody have any objections to another continuance regarding this matter?
How long are we gonna continue it for?
That is the question?
And I, he said two months, which would mean that it would be our December 20th meeting.
I know what I mean, in two months when they ask for another continuance, are we gonna do it for another two months?
Yes, this does, let's see. For point of information, this does relate to the, we had another billboard, digital billboard project that we looked at. I forget when exactly that was approved, but I wanna say it was in February, January or February. There are some legal questions regarding this project as it relates to a few different things. Ordinarily, I would kind of go with, let me see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Five continuances would kind of be getting to that point with me. This one I know is a little bit thorny. So, I hear you.
I mean, it's really a matter of not having to renotice everything, and people that are residents that are looking to follow something like this have to follow every two weeks, and that gets annoying.
Yeah, in this case, it has been, we have given some space in those, it's been a month, and this is two months. But yeah, I agree with you, but yeah.
A motion to continue, SP 12737, so December 20th.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to continue? Okay. All in favor of a motion to continue, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Project is continued once again. And that brings us to the final project on our agenda this evening, which is the initial presentation of a preliminary subduing, 16631. It also has Reservoir Estates, with the address of 0 Reservoir Street. I know we have some people here to present, I know we have people on the Zoom meeting as well. I'm not sure how you want to structure the presentation, but I'll let you get set up and then introduce yourself however you feel is best appropriate. Just from, so you're aware, the board does have access to those plans in the shared repository. So if we're looking at the computer, we're not checking our email, we're probably looking at the same plan.
Yeah, this one's a little colored, so it's a little easier to read.
That's fine.
So my name's Cameron Campbell, I'm with Desolberg Solid, the engineers for the client. So the project is two parcels off of Reservoir Street and Mansfield Ave. If you're familiar with the area, it's across from Norton Liquors on Mansfield Ave. And then on Reservoir Street, it has 588 feet of frontage down. If you go further this way, it's where Reservoir Street meets Mansfield Ave at that sharp point. And it has 2,297, yeah, 2,297 feet of frontage along Norton Reservoir. It's got a significant wetland that comes right through the center of it, that cuts it off from the Mansfield Ave portion. And so the majority of the access to this site is from Reservoir Street. It's zoned R60 at this parcel, which is 9-225, and Village Commercial, on this parcel, which is 9-223. It's, as of right now, it's undeveloped, it's a mixed forest with some walking trails through it. And it has a couple of little outrock outcroppings here and here, and a stone wall that runs through the center, right along that property line that splits the lot. It has some single-family houses abutting on the side and across the street on Reservoir Street. Right here is an auto body shop, and then an abandoned single-family house also. The topography on the site's relatively flat. You have a couple of high points where the ledge outcroppings are, but it generally slopes all towards the reservoir and separate from this portion. From the middle of the site, there's a wetland along this abutment. The middle of the site all slopes to that wetland. This middle portion all slopes to the reservoir, and then along this edge of the wetland, all slopes into the wetland. It all goes to the low points on the site, as you can see the wetlands. There's a couple of little low-line wetlands here. We went to the conservation and got an ANRAD or an ORAD from them, and determined these are non-jurisdictional, as in they don't have any buffer zones required for them. And then the red lines all throughout here, this second red line's a hundred-foot buffer from the wetland, and this first red line's a 25-foot buffer. So we're proposing to come in and do 17 lots on the R60 with a 2,600-foot looped road, 50-foot wide road. Two of the lots will be non-buildable, specifically for drainage and a little parking area, a community parking area. The other 15 are single-family houses.
And the non-buildables are 22 and 23?
They are lot number one and lot 14.
One, okay, so one is down on the.
Bottom, right?
And 14 is the little ledge at the top?
Yeah. And then in the Village Commercial, you'll have six lots, they're all, they're, they'll be multifamily lots. You'll have two duplexes, one triple, three-family, one four-family, one six-family. And then this larger lot in the center will be three six-family houses. It's for 35 units total. So it'll be a total of 50 units altogether. And this dead-end road is 860 plus-minus feet from the intersection of this to the end of the turnaround.
Okay. And just to, so you mentioned that some of the lots would have multiple buildings per lot?
So the only lot that has multiple buildings will be this lot here, the rest will be like a townhouse style. This one will have three buildings with exterior parking. I can flip the page, it'll show the conceptual building layout.
Sure.
The orange blocks are the conceptual buildings, they're, these are all the single-family, they're like a 2,100 square foot building. And then these are the townhouse-style buildings, they're about 24 by 36. And then we've added additional surface parking here and here, along with in here. This would provide access as well to the reservoir for public use. It would be 26 feet of pavement with five-foot sidewalks on the other side. So we go to the grading of it. We've done some soil testing onsite, I've done about five test pits out there, and the groundwater is at like two and a half feet down. So we're gonna have to bring some fill onsite to bring it up, so. We'll come from the street grade out on Reservoir, you'll come up to the high point that was the ledge there, and then follow the natural grade back down on the road. Down, and then you'll come back up to another high point, which is back over here, and then come back down to Reservoir Street. And then throughout these, you'll have catch basins along the slope that all feed into a constructed wetland at the front. And then two more sets of catch basins along the front here, that's also feeding a constructed wetland. And then along here, we have redesigned tree wells along the whole, from the high point down to this low point, from the high point down to the low point, that feed into a detention basin at the rear. And then here, you have the lower point, and it feeds up to a high point centered on the dead-end road. And then it feeds to a low point at the circle, at the start of the circle, which, and there's tree wells all along the dead-end road, which feed a, which feed into the larger detention basin, and also into the, another smaller detention basin at the end of the dead-end road. And then throughout the site, there's also three little rain gardens to collect other portions of the pavement that aren't captured by the tree wells.
Okay. So obviously you're here for preliminary subdivision at this, preliminary subdivision plan at this point?
Yeah.
So just looking at order of operations here. Multifamily dwellings in Village Commercial are by Special Department, as are duplexes. And you view that extension at the top as a continuation of the road and not a common driveway?
Yeah, so this, we allowed frontage along here from, so we looped it, and it touches, and it allows frontage on here.
So the, so the frontage of the dead-end road is off of the looped road, so it's two roads?
Yeah. So there'll be a dead-end road and a looped road.
Okay.
Would you consider adding a shared driveway off of the end of the cul-de-sac?
Right here?
Yes.
That's the driveway for this unit?
Those are multiple units?
Yeah, it's one unit, but it's, it's a six-family, so you have, they each have a single garage, so you'll pull in and provide access to each garage.
Would we consider that a shared driveway?
It's a singly unit. So I think if I was going to draw a line, it'd probably be not. I'd have to review when a common driveway is required and what would constitute a unit. We could review that, and if appropriate, we can give the applicant additional guidance.
We do have a 20-foot shared driveway around the back of those units.
Does common driveway require a special permit?
Yeah.
And ultimately, as I always, Laura, as I always try to keep in my head, it is the applicant's responsibility to ask for all the relief that they need.
And we understand that a dead-end road in the bylaw, in the zoning bylaw, it only allows 13 residential units, and we're asking for 35 here. And we have a conceptual design where we can cut across the wetland and go out to Reservoir Street, I mean, out to Mansfield Ave. And we talked to the Conservation Commission, and they would rather us not do that. And we would rather not do that, it's much more environmentally sensitive to do it this way. So we're gonna be asking for a waiver for the amount of units on a dead-end road.
In terms of conversations that you've had with other town departments, have you spoken with fire at this point?
Not fire, we've spoken with water and sewer.
Okay, that water and sewer was going to be my next question.
Yeah, we will have to extend 1,300 feet of sewer down Reservoir Street. These will, these will not be septic. We're planning on extending the sewer down Reservoir Street, a gravity line down Reservoir, 1,300 feet down Reservoir Street in between Acre Road and Elm Road. And then these will have a pump system throughout the development.
How many houses does that extension go past?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
So that gets tricky, that does get tricky, yes. And just for point of information for the board, this is a preliminary subdivision, which does not require noticing of residents. I would expect that if a project of this nature was noticed, there would be significantly higher attendance in this room. So there will be significant discussion with abutting residents about the project, I would expect. If you aren't aware of that already.
Yeah, we went, we went before the board a while ago, because our applicants tried to rezone this portion as Village Commercial, and there was significant attendance.
Yes. Okay. Okay, and water and sewer, you basically said that you wanted to bring sewer up to that point, and it's coming from, from Mansfield Ave, essentially up that direction?
No, it's coming further down Reservoir, between Elm and Acre.
From Elm, down.
Yeah. And we've had a discussion, and we're still working with them on it, because there's another development that also wants to tie in down there.
Is that just residential houses right at that triangle there, or is that something different? If anyone can speak about a different project, I'd love to ask.
I'm not sure what's.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, because water, obviously, as you mentioned, this is a low-lined area, so getting septic in here seems, would seem very challenging.
Yeah, I believe that's pretty much why it hasn't been developed yet.
Okay.
And that's another reason why they're asking for the waiver on the amount of units, it will be a little more costly to bring that sewer in. So the amount of units is trying to help them develop this area.
Okay.
But you're asking for almost triple the number of units, that's a lot, correct?
35, 13, yeah.
Okay. Do we have additional questions for the applicant at this time? Again, this is a preliminary subdivision, so in a way, it is a method for us to give guidance to the applicant in terms of recommendations or changes that we would like to see, potentially, before they come forward with a definitive.
Can you talk a little bit more about the boat access, will it be available to all town residents, or only residents of this community with the subdivision?
I believe it was talked about being available to all town residences. I'm not 100% sure, it's still preliminary at this point.
That's also a major source of contention within town at this point, folks who never are bearing the.
The weight of, yeah, and that was a big talking point when we originally went for the rezoning, was access to the reservoir. And the clients understand that they wanna provide access to the reservoir. They don't wanna build this hideous development and not give Norton anything. They, they're willing to work with the town for this development.
Have we heard from the Board of Health?
No.
When do we expect to hear from the Board of Health?
I don't think so.
That is a prerequisite for a subdivision.
The preliminary plans should have been provided to them.
We'll reach out to them.
Just a procedural question, do we normally get a peer review on a preliminary site plan?
For a preliminary subdivision, I don't believe we've got peer reviews on it. Is there a particular aspect of it that you're? Uh, for a preliminary subdivision, I don't believe we've got peer reviews on it. Is there a particular aspect of it that you're concerned about?
Yeah. There is.
Are we talking about stormwater and sewer?
A little bit about that. I am more concerned about the Wetland Protection District and subdivision control laws.
Okay.
Well, I know we have to go in front of Conservation, so, and they will require a peer review as well. So they'll, they'll look heavy into the wetlands.
So my primary concern is this is entirely within the Wetland Protection District. I understand the overlay is specifically related to elevations in this area that are at or below one hundred and five feet. Um, but permitted uses is construction of a single-family home. Existing multi-families are allowed, um, but the permitted use is construction of single-family.
Village commercial.
Um, so with regards to the village commercial, I, I did look at the elevation on the site plan. I have some concerns. It is bumping right up against that one hundred and five-foot elevation in a lot of areas, specifically Lot twenty, I have concerns about Lot twenty, nineteen, and twenty-two. If you wanna go to the, um, page eighteen and nineteen of your plan set. Brian?
And the elevations marked as is or we have to fill? Just to-
These, these are the proposed elevations, the, the proposed slope, the little lighter gray lines are the existing. So we're filling, so you're at one-ten down to one oh-six and you're at one eleven here, so we're filling in this area and then sloping back down. We're building, essentially building a platform for this house or for this multi-unit building.
And then can we talk about the one to the left of the cul-de-sac, cause that last unit on the far left, literally a butts all the way to the far left, keep going down there, that's a hundred and five. And that pool that you're pointing at right now actually depresses there.
Yeah, that's, that's our stormwater detention.
Yep.
So the bottom of that is at one oh-five and it'll, we have an outlet control structure, so all the water will go to that. And it'll control how much water gets released and it gets all treated prior to going to that. And it meets all the mess.
I, I agree you are within the, the letter of the law.
Yeah.
It, it can be built. I'm more wondering, should it be built? Um, I'm also concerned with regards to the Norton subdivision control law, um, design standards. Uh, Article Five relates to designing construction and it should be designed to reduce to the extent reasonably possible area over which existing vegetation will be disturbed, especially on land within two hundred feet of a river, pond, water core stream, or having a slope of more than fifteen percent. And I believe we've already looked at the hundred-foot buffer mark. Most of this area is well within two hundred feet. Of this particular, of the, the, the village commercially zoned area is almost entirely within two hundred feet of the reservoir.
The majority of this is not. This portion, the buildings are, the roadway isn't, up until the cul-de-sac.
Okay. Brian, can we pull up the hundred-foot buffer over?
You can see it, it's in that, that dark dashed line, yeah.
That's a hundred feet.
Yeah.
The design standard referred to two hundred feet.
Two hundred feet.
Not one hundred feet. So like I said, everything here is inside of that.
Yeah.
So I, I would have reservations approving this based on what I'm seeing without any further guidance from a professional.
And we understand that, we assumed you guys would get a peer review at the definitive, definitive stage. We assume that would happen. Uh, water and sewer already informed us they're gonna get a peer review. And Conservation, they're probably gonna get a peer review. Uh, we were looking, I don't know if you guys do your own or if you can work with water and sewers to kinda consolidate it?
We're looking, it can be, but we are looking at different standards, obviously.
In a lot of cases, we do try to do a quote-unquote, like, combine in so much, so that, uh, the applicant is only speaking to one part.
Yeah.
Um, and if they have to sub out for traffic or something like that, they still have one point of contact rather than having it be spread out like that. But the, yeah, the peer, the peer reviews themselves and what they would cover, kind of, different boards would add different things to the checklist.
Yeah.
And I mean, I'm gonna echo Laura's concerns about, um, the two hundred-foot buffer in, in, in an area that's, that's very important and critical. I, I'm also, I, I'm, I'm very concerned about precedent of going from thirteen units on a dead end street to thirty-five. It's not like you're going slightly over and it opens up the entire town to apply for the same thing and, and use this as precedent for the reasons why it should be approved. So, I mean, there's multiple reasons that, that, that I don't like this as well.
We understand. We, I mean, there is a way we can do it without it being a dead end road. We're just trying to avoid the, um, level of disturbance through the wetlands that by having it be a dead end.
Okay. Is there anything else the, the board has in terms of questions or, oh, two, I know, uh, you have other person here, maybe somebody on the Zoom meeting as well, if they'd like to say anything. Certainly can. I don't want, I wanna make sure that I don't monopolize the, the speaking here. Cause I do plenty of that in other settings. So. Is there anything else you'd like to say? Any other questions the board has? I'm gonna stop talking for at least twenty seconds.
Peter, talking.
All right, close enough. I didn't actually tap myself.
Yeah.
Okay. We do have a number of other people on the Zoom call here. Would anyone who is on the Zoom call in terms of members of the public or anything bad like to speak related to this agenda item? If you would, uh, I'd ask you to use the reactions function in Zoom and quote-unquote raise your hand. So if multiple people want to speak, I can call on you. And I'll give that a little bit as well, if anybody would like to speak. All right, anybody in person? Peter, would you like to say anything?
Yes, yes. I, I live up the street from that road and Norton Lickish just moved from its, Lickish across the street, it's a, a work for a small place and that's a well-traveled road.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Do you have any additional questions for the applicant at this time? Is there anything that we would like to?
I got a question.
Yes, please.
Jim Burke.
Please just, just, uh-
Uh, Jim Burke with the Selberg Sal. Uh, you mentioned traffic and I'm glad you did. Now you guys, when we go definitive, will you guys be looking for a traffic report?
Uh, I think we probably would given the density proposed.
Fair enough. We have, uh, Mr. Derek ready to go on.
Sorry, didn't get to speak for the board, David. Does that seem like a fair? Okay. I just got a shot from the hip there, but, uh, a little bit too quick on that drop. Okay. So our questions are in terms of the dependent, the preliminary subdivision plan, not the definitive. I apologize. Again, this is not necessarily a, a binding, um, decision in terms of, um, approval. It, again, is a mechanism for us to give feedback to the applicant. Is there any further feedback that we would like to give prior to any kind of emotion?
Motion to approve the preliminary plan one-six-six-three.
So again, this is a motion in the affirmative to approve, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And is there a second on the motion to approve the preliminary subdivision in the affirmative?
Seconded.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan? Okay. All in favor? Again, this motion was in the affirmative. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
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 Okay. Abstentions? Okay. So the board has, uh, voted zero, six, and zero, um, for the preliminary here. And I know we do need to submit a decision to that effect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys all done?
Uh, we have a couple of housekeeping items here, but, uh-
I'm gonna stay and collect the broom's run. Just have to go.
You can hopefully better than the, uh-
Yeah, don't kill it. That was rough. Take care, guys.
Okay.
Good night.
Okay. So, uh, Brian, if we, I'm not sure when the last preliminary decision that we had was, uh, but we can look at that and see.
I believe it was the new commercials. I had several duplexes pulled back in till.
Okay. Yeah.
If not, then it would boost up.
Yes, yeah. Um, but yes, this would be a, this would be a, a decision, um, a decision not in the affirmative. Yes.
Yeah, I haven't checked into the city hall, it's really-
Yes. Yeah, we need to notify the applicant that the plan, uh, has been disapproved and we have to state our reasons for disapproving the preliminary plan. That's from, uh, the Mass General Law. So I think that, um, if you can find a good reference point, uh, we can maybe review it, um, at our next meeting using some of the, the reasons that we discussed in tonight's meeting, if that makes sense.
Sure.
Okay.
If it helps, I can just jot out my notes.
Sure, if you wanna send any notes, you can. You have to, Brian, we can certainly add those in.
It could just help, that's all.
It also helps that this is being videotaped, so we can always look back again.
Good point.
But yes, so, uh, that was the last project on our agenda this evening. Uh, I know we do have at least more than they need to discuss, so Bill, I'll, uh, turn the floor over to you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, anybody who's still on Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Um, you think, things come at us in, in unexpected ways. Um, sometimes things happen quickly. Like we just saw with, um, a, a major devastating hurricane down in Florida. And, um, based on some extreme family issues and matters that have come about as a result of that, um, we have to move to help family. Um, we will be moving out of state, um, leaving the date of the next meeting. So I am, um, regretfully, cause I have enjoyed this, but I am submitting my resignation. And we will be moving, uh, basically down to the Florida Georgia line so that we can help the family who still have power. Don't really have safe places to live. And, um, I had, um, told Tim about this at the end of our last meeting so that, that he knew about it. There, there, there's important work here and, and one of the things that I would really like to express a concern about is that somehow, um, we need to get applicants to replace Mr. Di Giuseppe. Um, Brian?
Yes.
You're, you're like Superman for this town and the stuff you do, um, should be acknowledged by every single town board. Um, you, you go above and beyond doing yeoman work for multiple positions and you keep everything flowing and you keep information going and, you know, I personally want to acknowledge everything that you do because you're phenomenal. You're absolutely phenomenal. But this town needs to get you help. And if they need to do something to get applicants or whatever the case may be, um, it should be done. And, um, I, I'm gonna stay connected to the town with a bunch of, um, social media things to, um, you know, I, I, I'm gonna miss being here, but, um, I, I, we're doing what needs to be done. And so I appreciate the opportunity to, to get to know everybody here and to, to work together for what's good for the town. And, and, and that's what, that's what needs to happen. It needs to be what's good for the town, not what we just did. It's not always easy, but, um, I'm, 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 I'm glad I, I'm glad I saw tonight. I really am. So, thank you and, you know, if anybody has any questions or wants to talk a little bit more once we're done with the meeting, I'm happy to share the decision-making process and I'll, I'll, I'll miss doing this, but who knows, maybe once people get settled again, um, I'll just do it at a different place. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Good luck, Bill.
Man, good luck.
Thank you.
We love you, Bill.
Thanks, Peter. We all love you too, man.
Thank you, thank you, Bill.
And Bill, we have this for you here, a certificate of appreciation for your service on the board.
Thank you very much. It's very unexpected and appreciated.
Yes. As you can see, we spared no expense.
I can, I can tell. You got, you got some heavy-duty stock for this baby. Maybe, maybe I'll cut out some, some plain paper to, to make a, a matting around it.
It wouldn't be town government any other day, so.
Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Is there anything else anybody would like to add for the meeting prior to a final motion?
Bill should make the final motion.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion to adjourn? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much, everybody, have a great day.
Thank you.